All this meeting to order, ask Commissioner Lanier to lead us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we ask that you look over our San Juan County staff, our Sheriff's Office, look over our other police forces after the events of last week. We ask that you look over our firefighters that take care of us. And we also ask that you you watch over our children that are going back to school and remind people to be mindful of the school buses that'll be traveling on the roads. I ask that you you look over my mother, which is recovering from a broken hip and is doing very well. And I ask that you give us the power, strength and courage to make good decisions tonight. In your name we pray.
Do you follow me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands in one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to a presentation for some special recognition. Turn the time over to Mike Mestus, our emergency coordinator, emergency manager. You coordinate.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, it gives me great honor to take a moment and recognize my Office of Emergency Management Coordinator, Ms. Don Knupel, for completing our FEMA Advanced Professional Development Series. As you can see from your staff summary, the Advanced Professional Development Series is over three hundred and sixty hours of professional development through FEMA. Stuff that makes an emergency manager well-rounded and helps us with all the facets of our job. At this time, I'd like the commission to present her certificate that she's been awarded through FEMA and join me in congratulating Ms. Knupel.
So I'll step down and. Want us in front of the left in front of.
Come out here.
All right, great smile, everybody, right here, one, two, three. One more, one, two, three. Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Voter support.
Yeah.
Congrats, Don. San Juan County is definitely blessed with employees that go above and beyond and and seek extra training to be able to serve our our community, and this is just another example of that, so thank you. And looks like we need to move into canvas boards, so I'll stand for a motion.
Second.
Having been moved in second of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Brings us to the canvas board, so I'll call it to order.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the commission. Our office conducted a special, all male, meaning male, Don, male with FEMA. Just for clarification, um, election for the Bloomfield Schools' general obligation bond on August twentieth, we mailed eight thousand three hundred and sixty-one ballots. One thousand four hundred and eighty-five ballots were returned. The bond passed with nine hundred and eighty-three voters voting for the question and four hundred and ninety-eight voters voting against the question. I stand for any questions.
Do we need to do anything to certify that or?
I'll have a canvas sheet for you to sign.
Very well, no motion or anything like that, just just signing the canvas sheet.
I, it's actually, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I don't remember what we normally do, but I'll defer to the clerk.
Um, I'll take, if you would, a motion to approve the results from the Bloomfield Special Election.
I move that we approve the results from the Bloomfield.
Second. Having been moved in second, is there, are there any questions or further discussion? Not hearing any, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I presume that it passed unanimously, so we'll sign that.
Mr. Chair, I will move that we go back into regular.
Second.
Having been moved in second of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Brings us back into our regular meeting. And so we need to approve the agenda, where where are we at with the agenda as presented?
As presented, no, no need for changes tonight.
Stand for a motion.
I move that we approve the agenda as is.
Second.
Having been moved in second of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion is approved. We're with this agenda, brings us to the consent agenda, which is number one, consideration of regular meeting minutes for July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Number two, consideration of memorandum of agreement with the New Mexico Department of Agriculture for non-native invasive tree removal and riparian restoration.
Well said.
Uh, number three, consideration of the fiscal year twenty-five, budget adjustment number one, resolution number twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty. That's it, I'll stand for a motion.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the three consent agenda items.
Second.
Having been moved in second of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I presume it passed unanimously. Brings us to item number one on the new business agenda, which is lower Animas Valley Recreation Trail Alternatives Evaluation for Presentation Only, Mr. Farrell.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As is the title, here today to present to you some findings on a recently completed alternatives evaluation for the Lower Animas Valley Recreation Trail, which is what we have been, or what has, we have titled, um, a a recreation and alternative transportation project that would connect the cities of Farmington and Aztec. Devin has promised me this clicker was going to work. And he lied. So, so first of all, the purpose and need statement. So it's to create a safe and enjoyable, non-motorized pedestrian bicycle connection between existing trail systems in the city of Farmington and Aztec to support alternative transportation, recreation, quality of life initiatives in San Juan County. Um, in the bottom right of this slide, you'll note that's a photograph of the Paseo del Bosque Trail in Albuquerque. That would probably be considered the the benchmark for multi-use trails here in New Mexico. Oh, now it's working. All right, so why did we develop that purpose and need statement? Um, well, there has been a collective prioritization of recreation and alternative transportation projects in San Juan County, um, as is evidenced by this listing of adopted plans by both this this commission as well as the the Farmington and Aztec City Councils and Commissions. Uh, I've noted them, San Juan County, in twenty twenty-one, we adopted our our strategic plan of strategic initiatives. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, there was the initiative for countywide recreation. And in twenty twenty-six, very specific to this project, is a rail-to-trail expansion as a place initiative here in the county. Similarly, city of Farmington in their twenty forty comprehensive plan notes a number of initiatives that are are relevant to to trail and recreation expansions here in the county. Um, and the city of Aztec very specifically speaks to this project by their implementation strategy eight point two point four, which is a Farmington to Aztec to Durango Regional Trail Development Initiative uh, in priority there in the city of Aztec. And also at the Farmington MPO, which I I think you're all aware is a um, an organization that's made up of of representatives from all those governments, including New Mexico DOT and the town of Kirtland, which which is in in Bloomfield. Um, is then the uh, the current bicycle pedestrian plan, which similarly notes um, expansion of own pedestrian infrastructure to connect the major cities within our county. Um, so history on this specific project, uh, San Juan County, as well as Farmington and Aztec began discussively, uh, collecting, collectively discussing the potential for a bicycle and pedestrian connection between our cities in in twenty nineteen. Um, through that discussion, the former Denver and Rio Grande Western Railroad uh, between Farmington and Aztec was identified as a priority alignment. Um, as you may know that right away, uh, once the railroad was abandoned, was dedicated to San Juan County, the city of Farmington and city of Aztec in nineteen seventy-one. Uh, we presented this project to you in March of twenty twenty-one, prior to inclusion of the project uh, in the Farmington MPO's Transportation Improvement Plan. And similarly, in in twenty twenty-two, um, the county, as well as the cities of Aztec and Farmington collectively made a submission to the New Mexico Department of Economic Development, their Outdoor Rec Division, through their Trails Plus Program for Funding, um, to support the design of such a project. Uh, we did receive a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant um, from the Outdoor Rec Division, and that was supported by a local match, which was split between the county, uh, cities of Farmington and Aztec. Um, and you may recall, in October of twenty twenty-two, we made an award to Sattermiller and Associates, uh, which is a a New Mexico consulting firm for the design of the project. So considering the corridor, it's a, it's an eight-mile project corridor bounded by Pinning Hills Extension, which is, as you know, currently under construction in Farmington and Hartman and Riverside Park, as well as Main Street and Aztec. Uh, the resulting trail would represent eighteen miles of coordinated trail um, from Among the Waters, uh, which is near San Juan Regional Medical Center in Farmington and the Aztec Ruins National Monument here in Aztec. Uh, you'll note that eighteen mile uh, is identical to to what's currently offered by the Bosque Trail in Albuquerque. So as conceived, um, as I'd mentioned, the preferred alignment would have been the former Denver and Rio Grande Western Railroad right away. Um, what became identified to us very early in the design phase of the project is the county offered that right away for sale in nineteen seventy-six. Wasn't all sold at the time, but uh, important to this project, a two-mile stretch um, just west of Aztec City Limits was indeed sold to the adjacent property owner and is no longer in public ownership. So to avoid conflicts with private property, um, we've evaluated alternative routes within that corridor I mentioned between Pinning Hills Extension in Farmington and Hartman Park in Aztec um, for suitability with the the stated trail objectives. Um, and again, that that study corridor was bounded by Pinning Hills to the, on the, um, should be west, uh, New Mexico five sixteen on the north, uh, Main Street and Aztec on the east and South Side River Road and. So that's, that's an image of of the corridor we're looking at. So again, trying to connect city of Farmington's trail system to the city of Aztec's trail system um, by way of a pedestrian and bicycle friendly route somewhere within that corridor. Um, so in evaluating corridor, um, we were able to identify four existing public routes um, that that we took a deeper dive into. Those were New Mexico five sixteen, which is the the state highway, that former railroad right away, which I mentioned. Um, Old Aztec Highway, which is comprised of County Roads thirty fifty, thirty five hundred and thirty five twenty, and County Road three thousand, which is otherwise known as South Side River Road. Um, the evaluation, which against, or the evaluation criteria against those routes were evaluated were character and aesthetics, so how does this route feel, how does it look? Connectivity, does it achieve the objectives of of our project and connecting those trail systems as well as potential users along the route? Ease of implementation, are there physical or social barriers which which may prevent this route from being um, ideal, uh, environmental issues, uh, that's both habitat, so bugs and bunnies, um, rare plants, as well as cultural, um, cultural artifacts. Uh, safety, is this going to be, again, in the the purpose and need, um, we want this route to be safe, obviously, for non-motorized users. And user accommodation, how convenient is it going to be for those folks who may want to use it? Um, so again, this is a, this is a map of those four routes we're analyzing on the south. You'll see County Road three thousand in blue, uh, the old railroad right away, which is shown in yellow. Doesn't capture that gap in Aztec, but it is that, uh, or west of Aztec, it is that stretch immediately adjacent to Aztec City Limits. Old Aztec Highway, which is showing in green, and New Mexico five sixteen, which is in that that orange color. So I'll I'll run through quickly how how each of the routes, um, you know, scored against those criteria. So on the five sixteen corridor, it scored well for connectivity and ease of implementation. Connects retail, um, space, uh, as well as like Farmington and both Farmington and Aztec. Um, it's an existing state right away. Makes it easier from a a right-of-way acquisition perspective. Um, and would, uh, but however, it would require NMDOT's involvement in its development. Um, it's scored neutral for environmental concerns. It's a developed corridor, unlikely to to have much in the way of environmental barriers. Um, it's scored neutral to poor for character, um, and aesthetics and safety. Um, it's a busy highway, um, not necessarily conducive to recreational use. It's not particularly scenic. Um, and there is only, this is, this is probably the the biggest factor. Uh, there is only one established bicycle pedestrian crossing, um, along that corridor, which is currently in at County Road three fifteen Florida Vista, where you have those two gas stations in the farmer's market in the the traffic light. Um, it did score poorly for user accommodation, so that's largely driven by the fact that this is a highway route with supposed to be limited at fifty-five miles an hour, so people are traveling more than likely above sixty. Um, so high speeds, high traffic volumes, and then an awful lot of of driveway crossings along the way. So this would be a a rendering of of what a trail might look like adjacent to the highway. Um, so again, you see the the travel lanes, um, with with a shoulder, a buffer, um, between two and five feet, perhaps greater. And then an eight to ten-foot wide multi-use trail. Um, in the, in the top right is a, you know, a photograph that's, you know, near the Farmington Flea Market there. You can see there's space available to accommodate, uh, such a such multi-use path. However, there's, you know, a a broad driveway there for the flea market, which captures that user accommodation score. And then also highlights, you know, that that you would be immediately adjacent to a major highway route. So the evaluation of the County Road three thousand and Old Aztec Highway corridors, very similar. Uh, both are county roads, uh, with similar aesthetics and 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 pros and cons. Um, both scored well in the character and aesthetics and connectivity categories. Um, they're both rural roads, um, uh, fairly good character of the area, there's a good tree canopy. Um, and, you know, they're representative of what a typical rural road in San Juan County might look like. Um, you do pass through farmland and residential areas, which again may be of of use to those folks that live there and may want to recreate on it. Uh, it scored neutral for environmental concerns, safety and user accommodation. You know, it's an existing developed corridor similar to five sixteen, so not likely to be, um, environmental concerns. Um, there were, um, based on, you know, desktop environmental research, that does, there are established cultural sites along the route, um, which makes sense, um, you know, it isn't a a river corridor that, uh, you know, ancient peoples may have 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 chosen to to live near for for food and water. Um, and it does have a a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, which is obviously more favorable than fifty-five for bicycle and pedestrian use. Um, it did score neutrally to poor for ease of implementation. Um, so it's it's an old road, um, and in some places it lacks a formal right-of-way definition. So there is, um, good evidence that we've been maintaining this corridor for many, many years. Um, but it would require likely a prolonged survey effort, because some portions of that right-of-way have never been platted. More so concerning, at least from a cost perspective, uh, are the the steep roadway side slopes um, and and utilities along the route that that would be, um, potentially fairly expensive, uh, to manage during construction. So, uh, notably, we do have a a highway adjacent or a county road adjacent, um, multi-use path project that was completed just last year. Um, I'll show you a picture of that shortly, but this is a a typical rendering of of what that would look like, very similar, um, to the uh, New Mexico five sixteen concept, but on a a much less busy road. And this is, uh, the path in Kirtland, which which again, um, the second phase of the project was completed just this this past year. Um, it serves, uh, the Kirtland School District or CCSD. Um, does pass through some residential areas. Um, so far, uh, it's been very well received by the folks that use it. Um, and and I'm not aware of of any issues, at least that have made its way to my office by by folks, um, who use it to either recreate or or commute. So the railroad right-of-way corridor, it's it's scoring, um, scored very well, uh, for character and aesthetics, connectivity and user accommodation. Uh, that's that's unsurprising, uh, it would be a a cross-country route. Most similar to that Bosque Trail that I showed you the picture of. Um, doesn't parallel the highway, um, does cross through some residential neighborhoods, um, providing great access for the folks that live there. Um, it would be a marketable alternative as both historic and scenic. Again, this is a historic rail trail for a railroad that ran between Durango and Farmington and supported growth in the area and and also very representative of of the scenery of the river corridor. Um, and it could also potentially accommodate equestrian users. You may have note, or you'll note on the cross-section, there is a an unpaved section as as part of the concept, um, that may or may not be a reality. Uh, but again, that was, it's, this is a agrarian part of the county. Um, the thought was maybe some folks may want to use it for for riding their horses. Um, it did score neutrally for environmental concerns, um, so it it is historic. Uh, there would be, need to be coordination with our state Historic Preservation Office. Um, and there are potential conflicts in in residential areas, um, from a a safety and buffering standpoint. Um, it did score neutral to poor for ease of accommodation. As I I noted, there were two miles of the route that's no longer in public ownership, that is private property. It would either require in, you know, an agreement from the the property owner, um, to proceed uh, an acquisition of the property or or abandoning that conflict altogether and and using one of those alternative routes that I previously described. So again, that's that's the uh, the rendering of of that particular option. So we've got the same multi-use trail with a buffer and then a natural surface trail um, that might accommodate, again, uh, equestrian use, but also folks who like to run and walk on a surface that is not paved, understand that could be easier on your knees. So part of, as part of the evaluation, we did do a a public information meeting that was held at the Florida Vista Fire Station on May the ninth of this year. Uh, we had forty-nine attendees that that signed the roster. Um, we did open up the project for for public comments, we received comments at that meeting, and then we also, um, you know, advertised on our website a comment form that, uh, those comments were received, again, by email through June the first, so about a month. Um, so the comments we received, uh, they were, they were on both sides, uh, you know, some some in strong support of the project and and some in strong opposition. Um, for those that were opposed to the project, uh, they generally were citing concerns regarding safety, uh, property rights, uh, potential for vacancy along the alignment, uh, cleanliness and maintenance. Um, and those supportive of the project cited the benefits of outdoor recreation, the history and culture of the area, physical and mental wellness associated with exercise, and then opportunities for tourism and economic development here in San Juan County. Um, in the the report, which is part of your packet, all those comments as we received them, meaning not paraphrased identically, are included as appendix F. So how would we fund a project like this? Um, not locally, uh, the the goal would be to fund any construction via grants. Um, I've I've listed a few federal programs which would be applicable and and actually that we've used for other projects. Uh, the recreational trails program is one that we've been successful in in awards, uh, for, um, largely mountain bike and OHV trail development in the Glade Run Rec area in partnership with the BLM. Uh, the transportation alternatives program, um, that's what funded the uh, the Kirtland project that I showed you a picture of. Uh, congestion mitigation and air quality, similarly encouraging, um, alternative forms of transportation to improve air quality and and reduce congestion on on roads. Um, and Safe Streets for All, that's that's a new program, that's part of the bipartisan infrastructure law, uh, again, targeting, um, the users who may not be in a car. Um, and then at at the state level, uh, this is just one, I'm sure there's others. This is the Outdoor Rec Division's Trails Plus Program, uh, which which again funded this phase of the project that we're we're currently completing. So conclusions, um, no best single alternative. Um, I I think as as was illustrated in those scoring criteria, every one of those routes, um, had had benefits and every one of them had issues. Um, so if if a project were to be implemented, implemented, uh, connecting. So if, if a project were to be implemented, implemented connecting Farmington to Aztec, it's likely to be some kind of hybridized approach between all those. Alternatives, meaning maybe some portion of five 16 is used, some portion of county roads are used, some portions of, of the railroad right away are used. And that would be driven by the practicality of the implementation that the, the associated physical, social and logistical constraints. If it were to be implemented, the project would likely to proceed in phases between logical termini within the corridor, meaning phase one may connect. And hypothetically Aztec to. Florida Vista or extending from Florida Vista to try to connect those, those retail uses in Florida Vista to, to the adjacent residential population. But it is important to note at this point in time, there is no construction. So any and all future projects that would be spun from this alternative study would, would be brought to you for your consideration. And approval of, of the funding or either the applications or in the associated match as, as would be true. Or also. Any portions of the project that are within Farmington or Aztec City Limits. So that is my presentation and I would be happy to stand for any questions or comments here my that.
Do any commissioners have questions?
Mr. Chair, I have, when you were talking about the five 50.
Five 16?
Or five 16, sorry. Five 16. I know there's been some talk of making that a six lane. With, what would this? I, I don't know that there's that much room up there. If they did decide to go to a six lane, so would that just wipe out anything that you would do?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lanier. So let's say. New Mexico Department of Transportation decided to. Get on board and say, yes, we want to build a multi-use path along Mexico five 16 as it, as it currently stands. 10 years from now, 20 years from now, they decide an additional lane is warranted. Presumptively that, you know, that the trail would either have to move or be abandoned. Or vice versa. If, if the, the, the highway were rewinding first, there may be a need for additional space to construct, construct such a multi-use path adjacent to it.
Right. And I know that we're. Cause I was at the town hall. So, you know, I got, I got to see both sides and. I, I understand both sides, but what are we really looking at here? And like in timeframe, we don't have the money to do it right now. Are we going to go out and seek? Some grants? What, what is the plan from this presentation on, I guess?
Well, that's, that's a fun question. So.
I wanted to put you on the spot.
Yeah. So let's, let's say. Phase one of the project were to be a multi-use path along County Road 3000 from some logical terminate, meaning maybe Aztec. Within the city of Aztec. To a mi- a mile out to some convenient intersection. The grant cycles for the, the program that would, would probably best fund that would be transportation alternatives. That's, that's a federal program. That's typically a, a two-year grant cycle. There was one that just closed. So. Two years from now, that, that grant opportunity would present itself again. We, we could bring to you a resolution of support for a, an application for the grant. At that point in time, the commission as it. In its makeup at that point in time, would have an opportunity to approve that resolution or not. If approved, we submit a grant application, maybe we receive some funding. If, if the commission says no. We would not pursue grant funding for that, that particular phase of the project.
And nowhere in there, I, I know that the chair has expressed. Well, several. On this commission has expressed that there's not going to be any taking of public lands, at least from this commission.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lanier, that's, that's entirely, staff cannot make a decision to condemn properties. That's for sure.
Right. Thank you. Not hearing any other questions. Thank you for your presentation.
You're very welcome.
Brings us to item number two, consideration of resolution number 242519. Approving a travel policy and procedure for San Juan County employees. Ms. Mark.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. So over the course of the last couple of months. We've had a lot of travel and a lot of people are now flying to go to seminars and conferences and stuff. And some questions have came up indicating, you know. Cause people are getting assigned seating and stuff, which is costing a little bit of additional money to get an assigned seat or whatnot. And after speaking with Ellen Wayne, our deputy county attorney and Mr. Stark. We realized that the employee handbook did not have anything that addressed these additional fees. So we wanted to make sure that we put something in the policy to make sure that there was no. People not upgrading to business class or upgrading to first class and then on the county's dime. So we wanted to put some kind of a. Guideline in there for the employees. So they knew what they, what they could expect the county to pay for. So we are requesting that language be added into the policy that indicates that the county will pay for economy. Preferred seating, which would be assigned seating. And that if the employee would like to upgrade to business class or first class, that would be at the employee's expense. And then we, since the airlines are now charging for luggage, checked bags, we will pay for one checked bag. So, and we're asking that to be incorporated into our policy to give the employees guidances to how to handle. When they're flying, the fees that the county will be responsible for.
So Ellen's not going to get to fly first class here moving forward unless she pays for it?
Exactly. So.
Well, I'm, I'm glad that was brought to everyone's attention. Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Stark?
Mr. Chair, if I could just add, we've never had that problem at San Juan County. Where we've had somebody attempt to purchase using county funds, business class or first class fare.
And I was, I was only joking.
No, I, I know. I, I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure for the public that they understand that. But there was a, a recent. Situation with a state employee where that happened. And so it did bring to light that our policy was silent and thought it. You know, thinking the best mind of the taxpayers that we wanted to make sure that that was clearly set out in the policy on both that as well as the baggage fee.
Very well. Does anybody have any questions? I'll stand for a motion.
I move that we pass the resolution 242519 approving a travel policy and procedure for San Juan County employees.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not seeing any of those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I presume it passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to item number three, which is a report on inspection of detention center.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It's that time of year where we give. A, a reminder every meeting of the necessity of, under statute of the. The Board of County Commissioners going and visiting the jails and reporting on the conditions there. My understanding is that both the chairman and Commissioner Lanier have now. Inspected the jail. So we only need one more to reach a quorum and then we'll have that, that duty taken care of. So just a reminder.
Steve tooting his horn again.
I thought I was going to make one more meeting. Yep. So I guess it's, it'll be now a race to see who's third.
All right. Thank you. All right. Brings us to a report from our county manager.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Even we had a short agenda tonight. I, I thought I'd give you a very lengthy. I mean, I actually want to keep with the short agenda and give you a very short manager update. Just one update. I know we've got staff would like to make a few updates, but. Freight, freight rail, four corners freight rail project. We had three public input. Meetings last week and I just want to report back to you that we had very good participation. We had Farmington over 80 and then at Newcombe and Crown Point, we had about 30 in attendance at each of those. Perspective venues and received a lot of good feedback that will be incorporated into the. The feasibility study, but there's still time to provide feedback if citizens have any. We've got a project website, which I've mentioned before, but the number four corners freightrail.com. Be a great way to, to learn more about the project. Actually recorded a presentation today that we provided. Over the last week that will be available online and, and just make sure we can connect with as many folks as possible. Regarding this, a very important project for, for our area and for our economy. And so I can stand for any questions. You might have regarding that, but I, I just wanted to tell you that we had very good participation last week for public input meetings. And I should also note that the feasibility study, we hope all goes well. I'll be able to wrap that up in the next two to three months and then bring a final report back to you. That's the end of my report.
All right.
Short enough?
Short. Well, I'll, I'll start out with. Reports from elected officials. As many are aware, this last Saturday. The stacks at the San Juan Generating Station were imploded. And we got to say goodbye to a, a large, longtime benevolent community friend. Although many of us said goodbye back in September 2022. Driving into the valley, not seeing the stacks. I, I think makes it more real. The, the plant benefited many generations and many people in our area. I think it's a 50-year life out there at the generating station and the coal mine. Both combined annually provided our community and community members over a hundred million dollars a year. In salaries and benefits. Also included an additional 30 million in taxes for. State, county and, and central consolidated schools. The, the county and, and other entities pushed to, to, to keep it going. That, that didn't work. However. We're going to continue to push for other. Projects, other. Ways to diversify, expand and include new energy opportunities. The county is, is making efforts with the Navajo Nation to bring the freight rail to the area. In my opinion, that needs to be at the forefront of, of what we do moving forward. To bring the most opportunities to, to our community. But. You know, it was definitely. A, a physical reminder of, of the loss, especially financially for many of our. Residents here in, in San Juan County. And wanted to reassure our citizens that the, the county's. Goal and, and priorities is to, to bring in other industry, to, to bring in other energy opportunities. To try to fill that large gap and it's definitely a large gap. With that, I'll open it to other elected officials for reports. Glad I brought that exciting news and it made it all somber. If there's no elected officials that wish to speak, I'll open it up to department heads for any reports.
Evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Emergency management update regarding the flooding that we've. Encountered here in San Juan County. First of all, the June 21st flood that we have a presidential declaration. Declaration information ongoing is very positive. Ms. Kim Martin is in charge of that project and. Meeting with FEMA bi-weekly obtaining information and about ready to do our submission for our reimbursement. So. That declaration is going fairly well. And I thank Ms. Martin and the department heads that are involved in that. Most recently on Friday night, we had another bout with our monsoon season. We had a, some major flooding in the Ruins Road area. Aspect with our power outages. And then McGee Park got hit once again, the Arroyo there. Overflowed encompassing our parking lot there. Mr. Steve Danzy and crew had to keep citizens from entering the McGee Park off of. 5500. So we continue to have problems with our monsoon season. Additionally, Sunday, Shiprock got hit really hard with their monsoon, a big cell stayed over that area. Today, after checking in with the command post at the Shiprock Chapter House, 18 homes have been flooded. And five devastated that families can't go back. Emergency management, San Juan County has helped with technical assistance, offered sandbags. But emergency management from the Navajo Nation is in charge of that project. And they're waiting a declaration from FEMA to be signed by the president of Navajo Nation in order to, to help with that as well. So just a short update from the flooding 24, AKA also known as the emergency management. Mess this life here is, oh, God, he's continuing to, to respond. So I'll stand for any questions.
I just have, I have a comment. You did a great job. And, and I know you work closely with FEMA. So have they wrapped up completely now?
Mr. Ms. Chair, Commissioner Lanier, I'll let Kim Martin come up and speak to, to the ongoing meeting. I think she has a meeting on Thursday.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lanier, yes, we are working closely with FEMA and the state of New Mexico with regards to the claims for the storm that hit in June of 2024. We'll be, we're gathering all of the information now. I know that we're in the process of creating an accounts receivable for. The expenditures that we did pay for in FY 24, because we'll need that for the financials. And then as Mr. Dancy and Mr. Porell finish up all of their work and are able to submit their final invoices for payment, we'll be submitting reimbursement.
Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lanier, that's specific to public assistance for us. I didn't know if you had it. Well, the, cause the private, they did their. They came out and went to the households, right? And took, took their reports. And then that'll, that'll be completely separate from us.
Yes, that's separate.
But have they finished up their reporting?
That I'm not aware of. There, I'm, I've not been in communication with them with regards to the private.
I guess my, my real question is, since we've had another storm out there. Are they going to be able to piggyback on that?
No, unfortunately, I, I asked Mr. Mestus that question this morning during the department head meeting and unfortunately I think the plane closed on Wednesday. Yeah. So just a few days, of course.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, keep living your mess this life.
Mess this is the bestest.
Any other department heads? Not seeing any. We will open comments, input from the general public. Comments are accepted in person. Limited to three minutes and to subjects the commission has not previously discussed. Or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to comments or input from the general public. So I would invite and open comments to the general public. Please make your way to the lectern and state your name for the clerk for the minutes. And I'll, I'll leave it to whichever order you, you wish to come up in. Welcome.
Yes, my name is Gary Jensen. I live on South Side River Road and I have a couple of questions to ask. This presentation that was just put up here for the trail system, I'd like to have a copy of that. I'd like to be able to have a copy of the minutes of this meeting to state. That there will be nothing or anything happen in the next two years as far as. Public grants or anything like that to say, if that's possible. Okay? And I want to. Highly recommend that you folks have another open meeting. Because there's a lot of people out there, including me. That have no earthly idea that this was even being talked about. I found out about this in a roundabout way for today's meeting to talk about this walking trail. Okay? And folks, real quick question for you. Out of all the folks sitting here, except for this young lady here, I know. How many of you live in the county? Okay. So one, two, three, four. Okay. Okay, so one, two, three, four, okay, five.
Well, we all live in the county.
Well, I think. You live in Farmington?
Unincorporated, is that what you're referring?
I'm talking about the city limits of Farmington, Aztec or Bloomfield. All of you live in town?
No.
Okay, all right. Oh, I just want to let you know that what this trail is going to impose is it's going to infringe on a lot of people's livelihood and a lot of their stuff. People move to the county for the peace and quiet. Not to have somebody come bulldoze through their backyard with a, a walking trail or some kind of a fence or some kind of a campfire or some kind of a motorbike or a four-wheeler or something like that. I'm just asking for you folks to have another input and advertise it in a lot of places other than just, uh, you know, where people can see it. I don't take the Daily Times, the scandal sheet. All it's good for is to light the fireplace. I don't listen to all the other stuff. Need to figure out how to get it out for the public to be able to come to the meeting and voice their concerns and be polite about it, okay? There's a lot of maybe good things about this, but there's a lot of bad things about this too. Lots of things. Because you've got people camping, you've got people starting fires, you've got fires on the river. How many more, uh, deputy sheriffs that you're going to have to hire on to monitor this, this thing? If you want to put a system in, go to Mohe, Utah and look and see how they put theirs along the highway. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen.
Speak to them.
And, and if you have any other specific questions or wish to speak to staff member, you can reach out to Mr. Stark and if you have specific questions. Very well.
My name is Barbara Gilbert and I thank you all for being here and for inviting us to the meeting. I also found out about this meeting serendipitously and I'd like to know about any future meetings because it does impact me directly as well. I was really excited to hear about the bike path. I'm an avid bike rider. I love the trails north of Farmington. I love the trails north of Aztec and I don't understand why we can't connect them on the north end of the town. But I guess that's not an option, but in the suitability measures, I'd like to know why the citizens weren't considered and why public safety wasn't considered for those three different options that we were just shown on the presentation. The suitability measures did not include any impact to the people that actually live here and then also public safety. And then the other thing is I'd like a copy of appendix F. I did get a copy of the presentation and thank you, but I'd like a copy of appendix F that was not included there, okay? That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, my name's Andre Stradling and I have been pretty vocal. I know you've heard from me on emails several times. I did attend the Flora Vista Fire Department, uh, meeting and did, uh, look through all the information and have been following this very closely. You know, we, some of the points that were brought out in the presentation were the quality of life. Well, being a county resident, after being in the city, I can tell you the differences night and day. So my peace and quiet would not be the same. The quality of life would be different. It would be not neutral for me and for my, uh, neighbors. Um, you know, there are thirty miles of bike trails already in play. I am wondering why we need to add to it if it does impact residents in the, in the unincorporated county. Um, that's why we reside in the county is, is to get away from all that. Also, um, the project seems to avoid the residents, uh, notion, uh, needs and information that we've given you that safety is the issue. Uh, lower, uh, Samantha Lane, uh, my daughter lives on Samantha Lane, so I know about these things. They've had issues with vagrants, uh, vagrancy coming up into that neighborhood, right to their door, where that trail ends. Uh, we have just recently seen the crime, um, it just escalates in Berg Park all the time. The sheriff has said he cannot patrol all that and the Farmington Police Department is stretched thin as well. Um, the driving rural, it, in all, if it were a perfect world, thirty-five miles per hour would be great, but living on Old Aztec Highway, trust me, no one travels Old Aztec Highway on the west end, uh, between Farmington or Flora Vista and Farmington at that speed. They just don't. So I would worry about the bikers or, or hikers or the, uh, what livestock or the horses. Uh, I beg to differ that it's neutral. Construction would be invasive to our county quiet and potentially take years. The railroad is extremely, uh, invasive, um, and for livestock ranchers and for residents. And I favor the highway five sixteen. It may not be as aesthetic, but that's why we like our rural roads the way they are. And, uh, perhaps you could post the meeting's, uh, notice for these types of, uh, informational meetings at the post office as a suggestion. And I appreciate your time and, um, please listen to your residents if you would. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Any other comments?
My name is Ray Dean Coulson and I spoke at one of the last meetings and, um, since then, I live on thirty-fifty just below the Flora Vista Fire Station. And I know our speed limit through there was changed to thirty. We requested that, they did it and they speeded up. It was like, we're just going to shove it in your face and we're going to go faster. I've also learned since that meeting, there've been two bicyclers killed on that road within a mile of where we are at the bottom of the hill on thirty-two seventy-five. One probably maybe half a mile from our house and another one about a mile from our house. Our speed limit through there at thirty seems to be about sixty average. It is a straight shot and they just love to fly through there. It's not safe and it's very narrow. That just went, and I, I agree. I wish we had a better way to notify the public when we have these kinds of things come up so that we can have the opportunity. I had no idea there was a meeting at Flora Vista the night of that first one. And I do ask one, I want to ask one more question. At that fire station, when you're coming from Farmington toward Aztec, there is no pull-off there? And I was told at a planning meeting that that's a state issue. And I want to find out if that is. How do you find out about getting that done? I'm tired of being flipped off, ti- on that, nearly hit. And with that fire station, I don't know how the fire station guys handle it. It's a safety issue. So if you would let me know sometime how to find out about getting something done there if we can.
It is, uh, the state of New Mexico, DMC five, five sixteen, coming on five sixteen down to turn right.
How did they get the other ones done?
Uh, they've, they've just, um, appeared through time and in fact, if that road were to be upgraded similar to what happened with highway sixty-four, uh, there would be access control put in, um, specifically through that area because you've had a lot of different roads and um, connections across the highway that have appeared through time and uh, to try to improve safety, that would absolutely need to be, need to be done in, in future, uh, road upgrades.
That road's been there for forever and it's a, it's a busy turn there.
Yep.
And so it just concerns me. I know I'm tired of it. Thank you for your time.
Any other comments? Not seeing any. Uh, I'll close the, uh, input from the general public and it appears as though we have exhausted, oh.
Mr. Chair, if I could, for the benefit of the audience, to ask questions about how to stay informed with San Juan County. Uh, if you go to our website, on the front page, uh, you can access information under a button that says meeting agendas and minutes. And so once our minutes are approved by the county commission, they're posted on that site. Uh, so that could be hopefully fairly convenient there. Uh, the completed plan that, uh, it has, has been, you know, put together, that will be posted on our website. Uh, we actually created a project website specific to the Lower Anamis Valley Recreation Trail. Uh, when we, before we had our first, uh, public meeting, so any of the project documents will be located on there, including the full plan, so we'll make that available to you. And then if you want to keep up to date with all meetings in San Juan County, uh, via your email. Uh, if you go to our website under I want to, uh, you'd be able to go ahead and, and, uh, it looks like Mr. Neely is following along here, so go ahead, Devin. Uh, and, and point us in the right direction there.
Sign up to receive notification. You can put in your email address and you get an email with every kind of commission meeting agenda.
So commission meeting agendas, press releases, public meetings or hearings, uh, you'll have that delivered to your inbox well in advance of the meeting. So I'd strongly encourage, if you haven't signed up for those notifications, that you do so. It's the best way to keep informed with all, uh, business here in San Juan County. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. So having.